I call meeting order seven o'clock. So Judy can take a roll. Number two, discussion vote to approve the minutes of February eighth, 2021 regular board meeting. Amber's made a motion to approve, have a second. Desiree second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Number three, discussion vote to approve the general fund, encumbrances, purchase orders and warrants.
This page right here, I think everybody's got that in their pocket. Judy's done a good job making notes. Not a lot of purchases on there. I just want to draw your attention to a few of them there. Carol Robertson has our part-time counseling position for $1,276 at the, she's at the elementary, and we've been able to pay for that this year using some of the COVID relief money. William Scotsman, and that is for the two Oracle buildings that we are currently still renting. And as I've said before, the one at the elementary, we will be getting rid of that at the end of May, first part of June. Our fifth grade is currently in that. We will not be needing that one. So the lease is up on it, and we should be able to get it out of here. However, the admin building across the street, we are locked into a lease until October with that building. And I've been pleased with the company, but they said they can come get it whenever. Still have to pay for it. So we will have a decision to make if we get through the end of this year. It may be that, we may have them come get it and save on utilities in that building. But we're gonna have to pay for it through October, other than administrative offices, which we can do over here. That is what those two buildings are costing us currently, is $3,263 a month right now. Canola Club Internet, that's about the same each month, $1,900. The Center for Educational Law, those are some legal fees that we've had. Your attorney's been up here a couple different times visiting with its farmers co-op. Those fuel costs, a lot of basketball game. So that's $2,000 for last month. Home Depot, those are mostly sanitation supplies, and that will all be reimbursed through COVID relief money. And then the big one there at the bottom, that is our last payment on our newest yellow bus that we have. So that was for $30,372, but that is the last payment on that bus. So we've made it, and it's ours.
Any other questions on the general fund? Amber's made a motion. Desiree second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Number four, discussion vote to approve the building fund.
Not a lot of expenses here. As I said last month, we moved or began paying our utility bills from that fund to keep expenditures down in general fund. So you can see there, the Oklahoma National Gas Bill, $1,657.96. City of Cherokee, $2,074.49. And then our electric bill was $10,715. And that was because of the level. I mean, it's usually about $2,000 less than that. So that had a lot to do with that there, even though we were not here. It's just, it's a lot of building to try to keep warm, and we even turned the thermostat down, so.
It was going down a little more too since basketball's over.
Yeah. So like I said, those are the things that we've moved to the building fund for now, and we will continue to do that through the end of this year, fiscal year.
Any other discussion questions on building fund? I'll make a motion to approve the building fund.
Second.
Give me a second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Number five, discussion vote to approve the child nutrition.
I don't have anything really to go over here. These are just monthly costs on food, milk supplies. Amber, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I make a motion to approve the child nutrition.
Second.
Give me a second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Discussion, number six, discussion vote to approve the activity fund report.
I talked to Kendra, and next night, I've asked her to kind of start giving us a little more detailed overview of what's going on within the activity account each month. And so she's observing tonight. There's really not much here. Basketball season has ended, so there won't be quite so many officials' checks and things like that coming in and out. Hopefully, we get to have a track meet, and we'll get some more money that will come into that account. And then we've got a few fundraisers and things like that for some of these programs. But as I mentioned before, we really have lost some revenue going back to last spring, end of this year, in our activities, and lost a lot of gate, a lot of gate money that we depend on. So we're gonna have to keep a pretty close eye on the activity count. It looks very healthy, but when you consider all of our different activities. But the coaches have been good about fundraising and trying to maintain, take care of their things within their accounts the best they can.
Any other discussion on the activity fund? Amber's made a motion, do I have a second? Desiree second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Number seven, discussion vote to approve the treasures report.
On the summary of financial activities, that kind of gets a better breakdown right there. We had talked earlier that we were short quite a bit of our check in January, and I really was kind of shocked and surprised by that, but we did receive that, and we just received it late. So it's kind of split into two panes. So we did get a check for a little over $700,000, I believe, which majority of that went back into the general fund, which was much needed. So that has kind of been resolved there. Our building fund, this month, $54,000 went into that, so you know, we're starting to see a little bit of improvement in those other accounts there. Just not, not an amount we'd really like to see. And we expect to get a little bit more next month in April. You should get another bigger tax check. And I'll talk a little bit about the news of some of the tax protests and things later in my superintendent's report. Manthas or anything that needs to be noted?
We did not get any money for child nutrition last month because Mantha was on quarantine. So I didn't get the claim file until later in the month. But we have got it now.
Yeah, so that's why I'm.
So that'll be reflected in the next month?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why it's, there's just $1,333 is received on that for this month.
Is that all? Any other discussion? I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Desiree second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Number eight, discussion vote to approve the transfer of funds totaling $3,780 from the general athletic account to the boys and girls basketball accounts for $1,890 each.
Okay, and Kendra, I may put you on the spot here. If I mess this up, you can just jump in, but that $3,780 is what was generated off sponsorships and ads. And then part of that, then, because of the banners in the gym, gets broken down and divided and put into the boys and girls basketball accounts. And that's something we kind of had to change this year because they've always done the banners in the past. We included the banners with some overall sponsorships and ads, so to make that right, this is what we need to do. We just need to approve the transfer.
Any questions about the transfer? Amber's made a motion to approve the transfer, I'll second. Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Number nine, discussion vote to approve the student travel, FCC LA requests to travel to Nashville, Tennessee for the National FCC LA Convention.
Talking to Mrs. Gutch, they are gonna have the National FCC LA Convention this year, and most likely, we will have students that will qualify to that. It is in Nashville, so out-of-state travel, we need to approve. She will pay for any expenses out of her account, and that will, and that, we've already discussed that and how that would work. So not sure how many it would be exactly. Most likely, it would be, they would need to take a couple of our Suburbans, probably not, not to take a big bus or anything like that. But you know, I have no problems looking, going and doing that. They've always competed, and done a good job there, so I'd like to see them go back.
Any other discussion? I'll make a motion to approve the student travel.
One second. Sorry.
Give me a second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Number ten, discussion vote to approve the fundraisers. We have softball program request and a football program request.
Softball, would like to sell popcorn and coffee, and they've done that, I think, for the last couple of years. Estimated to bring in $2,000. And then football program, we have hosted a team camp in a couple of years. We've traveled. It's been a good fundraiser in the past when we have done it, and so we also don't have to go out and sell a bunch of stuff, which is always good. We wouldn't have very many teams here, and most likely, the teams that we would have here would not be overnight teams. It would be a two-day camp. They would come, they would have our camp and go home, so I would request that we would be able to do that as a fundraiser.
Questions, concerns? Amber's made a motion. Desiree second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Number eleven, discussion vote to approve or not to approve the contract with ADPC for the 21 and 22 school year.
ADPC is our accounting software, and this is just an annual renewal contract that we use. Judy likes it.
Very much so, and we don't want her to leave.
So I would recommend that we approve that and continue that for the 21, 22 school year.
Motion to approve. Goodwin's made a motion. Desiree second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Yes.
Goodwin. Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Number twelve, discussion vote to approve or not to approve the contract with OK TLE for the 21, 22 school year.
Again, this is an annual contract. It is the online software evaluation tool that we use to evaluate our teachers. So here is the B that comes with that. Sorry, I don't have that number in front of me. But it's, we don't have a lot of choices. I mean, that's pretty much what we gotta use.
Did you hear from them?
We have to use that? Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the tool that we're gonna use for evaluation.
I think the school needs that to report the evaluations and.
It's all online, so. So I would recommend that we approve that contract.
Questions, concerns? I'll make a motion to approve the OK TLE contract for the 21, 22. Desiree second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Number thirteen, discussion vote to approve Tanner Bowman as an adjunct teacher for one hour of physics for the 21, 22 school year.
This is something that came up in our probation visit last week. We didn't have Tanner. He teaches one hour in the beginning of physics, and we didn't have, we didn't have the proper paperwork handed in there, so we need to approve it for him to teach that, show that to Madison, turn that in to the State Department, something I probably should have had done at the beginning of the year, but we need to fix it now, so.
I'll second. Judy.
Well, hi. Yes. Gibson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Littleville.
Yes.
Number fourteen, discussion vote to amend or not to amend the school health protocols.
I know this discussion has been going on all year, and I've been watching things very closely, as we have all year long. In Cherokee, since our last meeting, we've only had two confirmed positive cases. We have not, I don't know whether we have not had any major issues in a very long time here at school. And so one thing I think that we can do that will kind of improve some route, some positivity, and try to get back to some sense of some normalcy would be to amend the protocols and go to a, like, personal choice with our mask mandate. So like I said, looking at the data here, and that's kind of what we try to do, but we really try to pay attention to what's going on in our school system. You know, we made it through basketball with a few, few things, but for the most part, I'm gonna be honest, I didn't know if we were gonna get through basketball really at all, or how that was gonna work. And so I feel pretty confident after knowing how we got through basketball season, and now that the spring sports have started, our kids are outside more, getting some fresh air, and being able to do those things. I'm comfortable with making a recommendation that masks would no longer be mandated for the staff that we, we currently have mandated for, and students.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Curtis has made a motion to approve, and Desiree second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Number fifteen, principals report.
The elementary, which has wrapped up third, nine weeks last Friday, so we have conferences scheduled for this Wednesday, Thursday evenings. And then we're all looking forward to spring break, and then coming back and hitting the books hard until testing starts on April sixth, for state testing, so.
Just some things happening. Seniors are filling out scholarships, finalizing the high school plans for after they leave Cherokee public schools. Underclassmen are working on their ICAP. This is their individual career academic plan. This helps them prepare for the future with career school choices. Mrs. Jordan does a tremendous job making sure kids are doing what they need to do and are ready to go once they leave here. Eleventh grade, Mrs. Richmond talked about it, third through eighth graders preparing for state testing, end of the year testing. Mrs. Gutch has eight students who qualified to compete at state star events, March 24th through 25th. And she's also taking 25 students to the state convention, March 31st through April 1st. Addison Wheeler, Bridget Willheim will both be receiving a $1,500 Oklahoma SCCA alumni scholarship onstage at the state convention. We've got several students over the weekend, last week, seeing the stock show, several students win their classes, and also showmanship awards. I listed several of the kids there. They did a great job. Mrs. Snyder works hard at that. We will host our first track meet here Friday, if the weather permits. One act has been practicing for regionals, softball and baseball. We're playing tonight. They officially started their season. And then Mrs. Richmond said, parent-teacher conference Thursday. We do have seniors versus faculty game Wednesday evening. And as Mrs. Richmond said, spring break's right around the corner. That's all I have. Unless you guys have any questions.
Thanks, Rem.
You bet.
Number sixteen, propose executive session to discuss the employment of principals for the school year 21 and 22, so that the vote can return to open session, and vote to employ or not employ Jeremy Hickman for the school year 21, 22. Twenty-five O S, three oh seven, day one. Amber's making a motion to convene. I have a second.
Oh, wait, sorry, who made a motion?
Amber Davison, I second.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Seven twenty-three. Number eighteen, acknowledge return to open session. Amber's made a motion, I'll second.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yeah.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
Eight nineteen. Number nineteen, stay in eleven minutes.
During the executive session, we discussed the employment of the principals for the school year 20, 21, and 20, 22, so that we can return to open session and vote to employ or not employ Jeremy Hickman and Ruth Richmond for the school year 20, 21, 22.
Thank you. Number twenty, we'll separate it out. Vote to employ or not to employ Jeremy Hickman for the 21, 22 school year.
I make a recommendation that we hire Jeremy Hickman back as principal for the 21, 22 school year.
Goodwin's made a motion to approve. Desiree second, Judy.
Littleville.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Well, hi.
Yes.
And vote to employ or not to employ Ruth Richmond for the 21, 22 school year.
Recommendation at this time would be to take no action on Ruth Richmond's contract next year.
Take no action for Ruth? Without approval, that is just not in there. Twenty-one, superintendent's report.
I want to give kind of everybody a quick rundown of some of the things that we will have to be facing over the next few weeks. I did talk to the teachers back in December and mentioned a few different times that a reduction enforced or writ would be needed and would be imminent at the end of this year for the 21, 22 school year. And so basically, in discussions with our attorney, the timeline for that, later this month, we'll have a special board meeting. And at that time, I will bring some recommendations on positions that we need to reduce, that I believe will be necessary so that we can get back and get a stand financially. We do have several positions that have elected to retire and/or indicated that they will resign, and it will be necessary that we will need to absorb some of those positions. And so all of those things take time to work out and come up with the best, best plan and put the right people in the right places based on all of that. I have had several discussions already with some of our staff members to most likely that those reductions would affect, and all of our other employees. This is a little bit early to be making some of these decisions sometimes, but I think it's important to give people kind of an idea of what's going on in those areas. Some other things, just to make sure that everybody understands kind of what we're needing to do. All of our extra-duty stipends are being reviewed from bus drivers, coaches, sponsors, all of those things. And so we're going over individual contracts, and we're going through our extra-duty salary schedule to review all of that, to try to eliminate and cut any costs that we can, and try to eliminate as much unnecessary spending as we move further through this, through this process. As I've talked about with our buildings, trying to get out of those leases or look at the best, you know, our best solutions there with some of those things in other areas. Though we have several contracts and things that we're a part of that we just, we can't get out of. Not that we need to, but when you're involved in schools, there are just certain things that you just, you have to pay for. And you have to have to make your business run, just like any other company. And so those are things that we're evaluating, anything from our student information system to, like we talked about, our ADPC. I mean, we just, we looked at all of that and continuing to evaluate what is necessary and what would not be necessary moving forward. We've talked about trying to do as much in-house as possible, from oil changes to spraying the grass fertilizer. We're not contracting any of those things, but we still have a facility to try to maintain and upkeep. And you know, our, our people that we have in place to take care of that have done an excellent job trying to save us some money and looking for the best prices and just really going above and beyond, trying to do more with less right now. Some things that we're gonna have to be looking at for next year, these are not things that are not common to probably 90%, if not more, to school districts across the state of Oklahoma. And they're things that we have done in the past, but are gonna be a little different. But we will, next year, we will have to start charging again for breakfast and lunch for all students and staff. There's free and reduced forms that are gonna be absolutely necessary that we have filled out. That helps us tremendously, not just with our child nutrition programs, but internet. And there's just a lot of things that go into that, and we will try to do the best we can to kind of campaign, to educate everybody on what that can provide by getting those forms completed and filled out on time. So that is gonna be something that we are gonna need to do next year. It will not be needed for the rest of this year. We're still getting reimbursed for all of our breakfasts and meals. We're still getting reimbursed for all of our breakfasts and meals this year, so it's important that, you know, kids and staff too eat those meals this year because we do get money back because of COVID and other things and through the stimulus programs and all of that. So that will be a change for next school year. That's not gonna happen before the end of this year. School supplies next year, those have been things that have been provided for the last couple of years, but we will have to go back kind of the way we used to do it. There'll be a list that's published in the newspaper and online on the website for each class and what those will be needed. And we do get a lot of donations every year from different organizations within our community to help pay for some of those things. So those things will still be needed. We have people every year that want to purchase supplies, either for an individual family sometimes or just an anonymous donation. And so those things will continue to be important. But the last thing I want to say is I just want to commend all of our staff with how they've handled the situation that we have going on, going all the way back to December when I first had to inform them that a RIF looked in it. It has been extremely difficult for all of them, but they have handled it with true professionalism. This is a tough situation, and the next few months, it's gonna test our school and our community greatly. But I have no doubt that through this, we will, we will be stronger. Maybe that's the coaching that coming out, but I believe that you get stronger through struggle, and we will be able to right the ship and correct some things. And I think that we have some opportunities to do some great things, even in the midst of all of these tough decisions. What's best for kids will always be at the front of the priority list, at the top of the priority list force, and we all are in this career. We're in this business for the kids to make it better. And I know as difficult as it's gonna be, it's gonna be okay because we have great people here that will make it okay. So as tough as it's gonna be, we're gonna be all right. Any questions?
Number 22, any new business?
There is none. Any business?
Number 3. Make a motion. I'll second. Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Willheim?